This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call the order of the minority slackboard on October 28th? Nope. On November 20th, I can't read the, that's the one thing, I can't read the date like I used to be able to. On November 28th at 6:00 PM.
That won't do with the current time.
So, and we have all members present here in town hall. For the first order of business. The classification hearing. So Scott is here from the board of assessors.
Alright guys.
How are you?
I'm good.
We gotta remember, it's just getting started, right? Get pace ourselves.
Yeah, there's not much here, we can't split the, you know, the tax rate at all, we're not even close. We have to have, I think it's, just about 20% of the parcels in town has to be in industrial or commercial code to be able to split them out and give a higher rate, but in Pittsfield, they charge $32. And then the residential is 18, but we can't, we're not even close to that. I think our total commercial industrial values I got here, if I'm reading this right, is like very low. It's so low, I didn't even calculate it, probably 3%, you know? As you know, we have no business, we have no business, we have no street. So we're not close, you can't split the, you can't have a split tax rate, that's, that really isn't a whole.
So should we vote on having one tax rate for the whole town?
I do have one question, I noticed in the document we got from the state that said that assessments were all preferred, it mentioned also like agricultural rate? Do we, we don't do that either.
No, we don't really.
Do we give them, we like, if you have an APR or whatever, then it changes the valuation of the property, but it doesn't change your tax rate?
Yeah, yeah. There are, yeah, you might have, there are various tools to, to owe your taxes. Right, but there's no separate tax rate.
Right, it's done by valuation.
Yeah, we don't have, as you know, we have no, almost no business.
That part I knew, I was just, I knew that there were ways to get your taxes lower by doing various agricultural things.
Forestry things too, you have a 10 acres over your building plot. Yeah, then you put that in chapter, chapter.
I forget which one the forestry, is it 60, is it 91? 61, okay. But that, if that's not, okay, that's awesome.
So I guess we have to.
I move that we keep one tax rate for the entire town.
I start a motion.
Is there any other discussion? Call vote?
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval. For the classification hearing. While you're in here Scott, I think we have some comments on the catalyst contract?
Sure.
I don't think we're ready to sign it. I keep forgetting the dates changed.
Yeah, yeah, we're doing, just to show you, here's the revised.
16 pages.
Yeah, 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 but the only changes is the dates.
So you've changed the dates, do you need the, I guess I harped on the dates and I followed up and said, you need to change the dates.
It's fine.
It sounds like there's other ongoing questions.
18.7 on page 11, agreement of construction under the law for the state of Georgia. Typically try to get it.
Where are we?
18.7 page 11. It says, "choice of law, construction of agreement."
Okay.
Not sure why, honestly.
Well, they probably did because the corporates did.
Right.
Ashton, if it could be the state of Massachusetts. Let's see what they say. You had to get them out of, probably to have it on.
Because otherwise if there was a problem, we'd have to change.
Yeah, it's just, you know, it becomes a burden to do. Very well, get there.
I came unarmed to the meeting.
Yeah, I got a couple.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Are there, are there?
That's good to know.
Well, if you're talking Georgia, you know, probably.
The one, the other one.
I wouldn't have thought that name said.
Yeah, I wouldn't have either, like the, I didn't know if, you know, there were other comments that were made on specific things, but I think it was more about not changing the contract, but being ready once the software is available.
And we wanted to examine it for next year's budget.
Yes, we have to. So we did that, that's to me was what I found very important, we changed.
And then there were a couple of questions about testing the software. The only thing to keep in mind is this is not custom software. This is standard software that goes to many towns in Massachusetts, so there's no customization. There's a bug in it that we find, something doesn't work, it'd be surprising and they would make those changes for everybody. So it's pretty standard stuff. And I guess the only question that jumped out at me, so obviously the judge has changed.
Thank you Scott. I need that.
Okay.
You want it back? You know, I don't actually. It's yours, it's yours.
I'm kicking it out of your hair because you have a business.
Thank you for coming though.
Oh, my pleasure.
It's for your shot.
You're welcome.
And things gradually have been done already.
Yeah, he's done, he's done, yeah.
That's awesome.
They got approved and now it just works on the tax rate.
Did a lot of people have comments on their evaluation?
Yeah, there were, less than we thought, but, but there were, there were maybe, you know, 25 people who resolved it through email conversations. Some of them have quite a bit, some of them have quite a bit, some of them have about a million, you know, I have one that was like a million. Four, up to, yeah, no, it wasn't that, two, four, up to three years. So there was a big increase, some of the high value. But.
Was that like new construction or something?
No, it was just, there may have been some new stuff in there. But the valuations had just.
Because, yeah, I mean, I think everybody knows that the market is a little crazy and would be surprising if they didn't go up.
That's what, that's what drives the sales, it's all about sales, and sales. And then of course they tell them that place down and.
Or in some cases they don't.
Some cases they don't, yeah. Yeah, they give up whatever they please, but it's, you know, it needed it to be honest with you. Sometimes I look at some houses and I look at the valuation of the house and I'd say, I'll take it.
At that price.
Yeah, yeah, at that price.
No bidding more.
Yeah, so I think it's, the town very much is lying down, the state is very happy with that. So things are all as well and the board of assessors.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Human Resources Consulting Services, do we have any? So town administrator performance evaluation, I think everyone got it this morning. I did, I do have a document here which just very briefly describes what the next two agenda items look like. The composite evaluation, I assume if there's any changes or comments or edits.
I have some questions, I feel like.
That we would make them and then we can approve it, or if something needs to be researched more revisited, we could finalize it next week, but I do think that we should all agree on it. I think that's the purpose of it. And then, not to jump ahead to the next agenda item, but for executive session purpose to the next agenda, I do have a draft motion that was okayed by Donna, which I'm not making now, but I'm reading, I move that the select board vote to convene in the executive session for purpose two, discussing negotiation strategy for potential negotiations with the town administrator specifically whether to pursue a contract and the details of the contract, but not allow anyone other than select board members to be present for the executive session and to convene an open session after the conclusion of the executive session. So that is available to the board. I also pass on an email from town council laying out what can be discussed in that executive session, but I think it might make a lot of sense to, to use that executive session, which we posted and can use for those discussions. We can't do the town administrator performance evaluation in executive session, so we have to do all that discussion here now in open meeting. You know, if we're discussing contract negotiations and the performance evaluation is, you know, relate, how it relates to them, that could be the discussion, but we can't do the actual performance evaluation itself in the session. I did, I have one small edit, which was minor. Page, oh, this was not my topic, that's not my topic.
Helps me if you do the number of the item rather than the page, because.
It's very minor, but.
I know, but I, it's better for me that way.
Bottom of page four, which would be section E, I just noticed it's operations departments, it should be highway. It probably just blew a confusion because the director of operations is the director of the highway department.
Oh, police fire and operations.
I assume that that's a common sense change that everyone's agreeable to.
So I have some questions that I just like, I feel like if I'm making decisions, I need to understand the stuff that was mentioned there. So I, the first one is the, it's in section three, relations with elected members, and it's the last, a couple in the last sentence of the first after paragraph, not the number, like the number. So erroneous information to explain the fuel outage? What, what are you talking about?
I was talking about me last year and the finance, when I was on finance committee.
And what, so what actually are you, I just want to understand what it was.
Okay, last year, you know, I don't know from what's the phrase we're going to say, but came to the finance committee, I did an analysis on the fuel cost and we went to, we voted for more money in the past.
This was on the FC?
Yeah, it was on the FC, because it was an experience I had.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure I am, I was going on.
And, you know, I was able to get the information, I did an analysis. I remember being stated that it was from, that we were consuming more of fuel and, you know, some consumption because we had more people back, we had hired fewer staff at the time, and the numbers showed that it was, it was the price that drove the consumption. And the finance committee, the select board at that time were all copied on it. My criticism was that those, you know, we could have, I felt we could have been caught sooner if we had been monitoring, you know, those kinds of things.
I, like, I don't know, just thinking. So my first exposure to the fuel conversation was before I was actually on the board and I was like sitting in on the finance committee and the select board conversations, so not last this year, about two years ago. And I remember that, that time I remember Sean, is it Sean that was director of operations? And Melissa going to the finance committee and arguing that the fuel budget was too low. And I believe at the time they said that, that that had been the case for several years and they asked for, I thought they asked for doubling that time, but it's two years, so I might not remember. And that, at that time, I'm pretty sure what they were saying is we've been spending that and they were having to do a transfer from another line. And that year, I think they, if I remember correctly, they got put up by like $5,000 maybe and they asked for doubling. And then what I remember from last year was that, I remember a series of conversations, select board and finance committee, or it might have started at the meeting with Jim, where we were having a conversation about did we need to be monitoring fuel consumption, remember? And we went through that whole thing, talking about whether we should get the device that monitors.
The fuel.
Fuel use and, and we looked into what it would cost to do it and the different systems available. And in the end, I thought that the determination was that it, that there wasn't enough change in fuel use to warrant the expenditure, because it was like.
Well, I think the other part wasn't, the area was pretty locked up, it was where to get fuel, you know, but.
Well, I mean, I thought that part of the conversation was, well, which departments are using it? Should we be charging each department for their individual fuel use? Like, we had some other things that were on the table and I felt like in the end, we were like, it wasn't really warranted to make that expenditure, that's what I remember about usage.
Well, go back.
But it might have been emails.
If you wanted email, it sort of summarized, it sounded 12.
You can send me the email. I just haven't seen it, or maybe I have, I don't know, was I in that one?
Yeah, I went to the select board.
Yeah, I just, because I don't remember usage being, I remember it being about cost of the fuel coming up over. But that, just because I don't remember it, it didn't happen. I want to add that too, because I did send to Donna that that was incorrect and that both Sean, Jim and myself had all said it was because of rising costs and at one point during one of those years, the costs had almost doubled. So I thought that was a bit of an unfair statement and I'm surprised you put it in when I gave the argument back. And then Jim and Sean can both confirm that we said it was costs. Well, the next one I got is the error in the proposed bylaw.
Yeah, it was the municipal department's bylaw, unfortunately not the right version.
Was that, that was the June, not the.
In the May town meeting warrant.
Yeah.
Which, you know, the whole slackboard signed off on, but it is the town administrator's responsibility to draft the warrant.
Did it also get run by counsel?
What's that?
The warrant?
Yeah, she had sent us the correct version.
So she corrected it?
No, so it's really, a really long and weird history, but there were a few different versions of it, but at a certain point, we arrived at this is going to be the municipal department's inspection by law. And if, I don't know if you remember, but I made on the floor a lot of changes because a lot of things that were in the final version were not in the, in the version on the warrant. But most significantly, the plumbing and gas inspector wasn't even on there. It completely omitted him, so there was a couple other changes and I can pull them up for you if you want, but things about the building commissioner being able to be the director of municipal inspections and such. But, I mean, anyone, including us, who had been involved in discussions would know that the plumbing and gas and the inspector was supposed to be in that department and it just didn't.
Errors.
Yeah, it just didn't make it in and there were, yeah, it says error, I mean, there's a few, but that was kind of the most significant one, so then on the floor, I did make a bunch of changes to make sure that it was up to D.
On the next one, I, like, I don't know if there's this, the, the firing, I'm assuming that the example of terminating employee is the police person? So I, I don't, this isn't the right form to discuss this, so we should probably have a discussion in future time, but I, you know that I have strong feelings about both. Any type of employee supervision issue being in public meetings? And that's, that's consistent for me, this has nothing to do with it being the DA, but I think for anybody, I don't think that's a good way to do HR. I think this would be an area to have a conversation with the Collins Center about what kind of process we can put into place and under, you know, do we have a process to the best of our, because we're the higher fire authority, but that basically requires always terminating employees.
No, because it's, the board has and usually would use the option of calling it executive session, so it wouldn't be in public. And this isn't even to say that's what should have happened. It was just that basically, we were, we were close, I mean, there was a plan that would have put the select board kind of at risk of a very egregious open meeting law violation as well, because the topic was discussed individually with each select board member, which in itself is not a problem, because it can be discussed, but if then action is taken that needs to be authorized by the select board and the justification is that it was run by each individual select board member, that's an egregious open meeting law violation. And on top of it, if it's a termination, I mean, it puts the board in the town and it, in a. Yeah, well, not awkward, I mean, in a exposure to liability and to open meeting law complaints. And for all of the open meeting law complaints that we've discussed over the years that were nitpicky, I mean, that is a valid open meeting law complaint. So that being said, I'm not opposed to looking into options going forward for different processes, but the way that it is now is the slackboard is the higher fire authority.
And I think that that's appropriate in some cases, but I just think it would be good HR if we can work with, and I'm sure we can find out what, the Collins Center can probably give us better guidance on what they're doing in some other small towns, but I think to the degree possible, particularly when there, when there's a department head that's over them as well, trying to figure out a process where we can keep it out of, because, I don't know, if I was getting disciplined or fired, I think I would prefer to have it done more expeditiously by my department head, rather than to have to like be noticed and then come to a meeting in front of a board and like, I just think it's better for the employee, but if we have to do it, we have to do it.
Well, we don't.
I just, right, I just like to see if there is a process we could, and then there'd be a stop of process. And this is what you do, if it's this kind of circumstance, we have to do it this way. If it's this kind of circumstance, we do it that way, and I just think we should look at the process.
One option would be that the town administrator and any department head could discipline or terminate an employee in that department if there was agreement between those two. And then maybe, you know, a town administrator, department head would need to be disciplined or terminated by the slackboard. That might be a middle ground, you could also do, the town administrator has the authority to hire and fire a period. I mean, there's different ways, I'm not opposed to looking into them.
Yeah, and we don't have to finish that conversation tonight, it's just that that brought to mind that I feel like it's something we should look at, because it's definitely an HR thing that I, I don't like. And I'd like to see us change the process. She also doesn't make it very clear that counsel that I should give an opinion that the HR director and myself and the lady chief could do firing. Makes it sound like we moved without any, so it'd be nice if that was added in there, because it wasn't just, you know, we took it upon ourselves to do anything, we had been given advice that we could have done it.
Well, it was and it was.
But it became convoluted.
Well, it was a clumsy process and I, I think at a certain point, I, it raised red flags in my mind and so then I said, we really need to get this out to town council. But I think it was, it became clear to me even with that advice that if you have to vote at a later meeting to ratify an action that was taken outside of a meeting, that's an open meeting law violation. So I just feel like we shouldn't have been in that, in that place in the first place.
I think that my understanding, I agree with what you said, but I, and I, it's, that's why I want to change the process. That said, I think what Melissa is saying is if she consulted town council and was told that this was an accepted process, it doesn't make that clear in what's written here. It sounds like the HR director and the PA just went off on their own and did it without any reasonable consultation authority?
Well, it's, it's, I mean, there's emails and there's a whole, it's like the other thing, there's a chain of emails you can look at.
Yeah.
I, you know, just felt like the board or a board member had to be more hands-on in that to prevent issues than should be the case. That's, that's what, you know, that's not.
Okay. I see you. And then the last one I got is the very last actual clause here in the, uh, let me name it better, with the public order of road closure by national grid every 20th and entering a road. My understanding is that it's the police chief and fire chief that are informed by national grid and that in this case, they weren't. And that's what led to the lack of anybody knowing about what was going on. Is that your understanding as well? Because I talked to Brian about it and.
Well, a couple of things, I was out there that day. I approached Melissa about it and she said, you know, she asked me who did it, and I saw that.
I'm sorry, who did what?
Who complained to you.
Oh.
And then I, but I was out there on the corner talking to the police officer because there was confusion. People came up to me, so I did walk down to talk to town hall, we talked to her about it. I think, you know, my, the issue I raised in the appraisal was, you know, reaching out, you know, some kind of follow-up to say, you know, if they are, I wasn't told at the time the fire chief and the police chief were the ones that get the notice, but reaching out and doing it because so many people, at least a half dozen people said, why didn't we know about this? Because I stood out there, I was doing stuff on the church pantry stuff, so, you know, I got a taste of it. So that's when I went and what I did was, you know, communicating that little bit of information makes a difference. That's what, I don't want to have a quote sitting in front of me, you know, and I just said, you know, those are things that people, you know, you follow up on, you know, it's a two minute email.
And I let Frank know during our meeting that that's the police chief's job and the fire chief's job.
And the police chief and the fire chief report to you and I complain to you, I brought the attention to you, you know.
But at what point, so I, and I'm not saying the communication is bad, I'd be the last one to say that. I think typically with road closures, we often get several days' notice, which is very helpful. But I don't like, at the point where they did it and then the police chief finds out from an officer that it's happening, he goes out there and starts.
Brian was right up front, because he was, he got called up first, I don't.
Yeah, he got brought over there and he, I didn't, like, but it was a done deal. I mean, I suppose at that point, you could still send out notice?
Well, you could send out notice.
Or I guess you could say apologize for.
Well, you could complain to the national grid.
We weren't informed by national grid and Brian did it.
Nobody followed up with me, I came to you about it, you could have said, hey, Brian followed up with me.
So better follow-up.
That's it, that's what I was, a little follow-up, it wasn't this huge point that I made, it was just like this little follow-up to people in the community make a difference.
Even if it's just ex post facto, saying we apologize that we weren't.
You don't have to apologize, the law is after nationals grid.
Right.
Communicate better, you know, I've reached out to the people.
Well, it's, you know, it's no harm to apologize for the inconvenience, even if it's not your fault.
The police officers got it more than anybody.
I bet, but you know, people, and I don't blame, you know, David got caught and had to go around. It's not like I, we didn't, usually you get information, but it's, your point is well taken and it's good to communicate even if it's after the fact, just to let people know what did happen or it makes them feel included in the process. That's all I got, does anybody else have any questions? That's all I got. Does anybody else have any questions?
I don't. I don't. So I don't know if we can approve this or if there, there's a couple, there are one, or a couple sticking points. I'm not familiar with the fuel overage, because it wasn't something that I raised and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't research it. So I just don't know. One way or another, I can't really say definitively.
I, it's, you know, I can't, if it was in an email chain, it was an email chain. It, um, my recollection is that the majority of discussion was about wasn't about, the usage was about trying to see if it was going up, but in the end, the decision was it wasn't really. And that most of it was fuel costs, COVID-related last year. That was like double. Then it went up like, by two, factor of two during, during that year. Um, but just because that's what I recall is the focus, doesn't mean that there were another contradiction. Do you have any memory of the?
Oh, I remember everything from, I mean, I don't remember the details or definitively, but I remember talking about fuel on many occasions and requests and then budgets being different and then requests and then the budget being lower.
It was a lengthy conversation.
But then, but then, I mean, we were completely blindsided by the, even if you regularly go over by 10, 20, 30%, that's not good, but to be blindsided by going over 100%, which, you know, it turns out really was unpredictable, you know, at least a good chunk of that 100%. Um, so anyway.
You know, for three years, Sean and I did ask for a considerable more amount of money and the finance committee select board said no.
I was there. I don't know if I was involved in saying no, but I was, I might have been. Yeah, I was there, because actually Steve Weiss was there and I was there. And then Steve Weiss stood up at town meeting and said, we shouldn't do this again. And I was thinking, well, I'm, I'm not going to get into it.
Right.
But, um, I was involved in one of the, in, in one of the lowers, but you know, I think we're going over 10, 20, 30, maybe 4%. To go over 100% was, it took everyone by surprise. And, but it was unpredictable, so. So, are we good to approve it? If I'm not mistaken, if we approve it and it goes to permanent personnel file, then, um, unless also the county should respond, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
Sure.
Do it. What's that?
I said, I thought that's what I was doing now, but I, I think.
Well, yeah.
And if you're not going to make the changes that
I mean, it seems like Frank is wants to keep earliest information in there. If like I haven't looked at the email, the only other option would be that I look at the email and.
Well, that's it. That's the thing is we can come back to it next week.
Yeah.
Um, so, so anyways, um, is there a motion to approve the composite evaluation?
Well, you have one change, don't you?
Yeah, you know, with the one change being the director of highway, their highway departments instead of operations departments.
So we're looking for a motion to just put one change.
As, you can say as amended.
Yeah, as amended.
As amended.
A second, uh, motion? We'll vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
And yes. Okay, um. I move that the select board vote to convene an executive session for purpose two, discussing negotiation strategy for potential negotiations with the town administrator, specifically whether to pursue a contract and the details of a contract, to not allow anyone other than select board members to be present for the executive session and to convene an open session after the conclusion of the executive session.
One second.
Is there any other discussion?
Only a question. In the past, when we've gone to executive session and then come back, we've had problems with the
Go-to-meeting.
The Go, the YouTube situation?
Yes.
Do we, we don't have any other, like, how do you want to handle it?
Well, the YouTube is resolvable, because with the help of our IT service provider, maybe Melissa knows how to do it herself.
Okay, so we did fix that one?
I did, it fixed me a little bit. Okay.
Okay.
We can trim out the video. We do sometimes have difficulty with getting people back in, which is a very good point. What have we done other than I remember? If we have a couple of people, I've individually called them and said, we're back. But we have more than a couple.
Yeah, so what happens is I'll boot everybody out and then we lock it and then they can, they go into like a waiting room.
And once we open up, they pop right back in. So if you're online right now, we're gonna, if we enter into executive session, if we vote yes to enter into executive session, then you'll be put in a waiting room until we return to open session.
We'll have to log back in, because I think I have to sign in.
You might, you'll have to log back in, just the way you logged in to get in the first time, you'll be put in a waiting room and then once we're back in open session, you'll filter back in. And obviously, if we have technical difficulties and no one comes back in, then we'll just, that will be the end of the meeting, because that would be not ideal. But hopefully, it all works. Um, is there any other discussion on that motion? Okay, so we'll vote and we'll vote, uh, in, you know, by rule, also Susan.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
And Justin, yes. So we'll enter executive session. At 6:36 PM, if I can read that.
Sorry, we kept you out, Mickey.
No, I'm just trying to get that out. I'm leaving. Don't forget to call me back in, because you did that one time.
Oh, we did.
Everybody's sitting out there.
Are you staying?
Take your coat, so you don't get cold.
Well, I presume the building is heated.
It is. It's actually pretty warm out there.
Okay.
So that's why you got to call me back in.
Okay.
So if you stop recording and then mic, and then if you also just turn off mic.
This conference will now be recorded.
Did you unlock it?
I didn't.
It did record it.
after discussion of strategy for negotiation, there are a couple of motions made. Um, I'll make the first motion. The town will not renew the employment agreement with Melissa Now and continue Melissa Now as an at-will employee beginning February 29th, 2024. Is there any comments or discussion? Call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. So that's in unanimous approval of that motion. Let me get another motion related. Uh, I move that the town will post the job and open up the position of town administrator for applications. After recruitment and interviews, the board will decide whether to hire a new candidate or continue to employ Melissa Now as town administrator, either as an at-will employee or with an employment contract.
Second motion.
Is there any discussion, comments? Call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so it's unanimous approval of that motion. So that is, uh, where that subject is at. And we'll begin our continued discussions naturally. Um, through any town administrator items, Brian has fit a business.
Sorry, uh, we had the HR IMA meeting today and within two weeks, you guys should be getting email requesting that you vote to dissolve the IMA and want the final bill for four months. If I calculated correctly, it should be around 6,300. We should have about 16,700. Um, the playground is all done and if I, if the bills, if I corrected, calculated correctly, there should be 446 dollars and 40 cents still left.
From our.
Right.
430.
Right, they go where that's supposed to go. Um, the rope swing, uh, the insurance said, I guess I should have cut that down. I'm not sure the sign is supposed to be there. I'm getting the board and coming down about something similar to what's on the playground, basically, playground risk. Playground law has to get that there, so just need to be there for the warning. And.
So is that something that, do you, do you know if like the police, who's going to go and cut it down?
I'm not sure. Is it high? How can the highway cut it down?
Yeah, it gets cut down all the time anyway.
And she said the only way, if, the only way if you wanted to have it there, you'd have to make sure that it needs to be like properly secured.
No, okay. No, I mean, go there and look up in the tree and you see it. Rope, 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 rope. Um.
People just climb back up and put it. And you can, we can post the signs, but, and, and I think that's just what happens.
Um, so there has been a request made to hang a, I don't remember what kind of flag it is, pro-life flag. Um, and it's brought some discussion out in my stand group that you need to have a policy or you should have a policy about what kind of flags could be hung there. So I'm asking permission to. You can't, so once you say yes to any kind of private flag, then you have to let all of them. So I'm suggesting to you that we have a policy that only the American flag can be on the town's flag pole.
So only follow-up would be like we might want to do state or like president's war missing an action.
Okay, yes, that, that did come up in some of the conversations, so I will, if it's a, if it's an actual organization, I believe. So I'll, I'll do one of those templates for you, but just not any private, good organizations. Um, and then last week, you guys also asked about the, um, whether you're going to be engaging in the annual town meeting. And Chris has not followed them.
Yeah, it was. I, there, I thought.
They were supposed to answer by, uh, September 4th, whether they did junk on the air or something.
I think for a while last year, it was the only.
Well, it's, it's only for a bylaw. I'm trying to think of what bylaw. Did we do a bylaw in 2022? Right, we don't hear for a bylaw.
Right, you don't hear for a bylaw.
What the, I thought that was like so early, it's already a change.
At the 2023, there was, yes.
Yeah.
You had that and you had the.
Yeah.
No, 2022. Right, because we, we talked about the 24.
No, we're talking about 2023.
No, so it's the 2023 one that's late. What she was asking was, oh, I thought there was the previous year. It took a while, but I don't remember what it was that took a while. So I'd have to go back and look at the.
Yeah. Well, that's good news. Thank you. That is following up. Um, Mickey, did you have business?
Public, just Mickey. Um, in this, what is this, this multi-body, any?
Multi-member body committee.
You state that, please, the select board prefers to appoint residents who are registered to vote in town to vacant elected positions.
Mm-hmm.
I would assume, and that's, can you can only assume, because it's very not clear that you were talking about filling a position that is vacant and filling it just until the next election.
That's all we're allowed to do by law.
But it doesn't say that here, and it should say.
Well.
Because it's very misleading.
We can, I'll take a look. But I've always, I mean, I think it's, for me, it's just, yeah, I'll take a look.
It has, if you're writing down these things, they have to be very clear. So that anybody opening this can say, oh, they can fill a, a position, an elected position, and it doesn't have to be a registered voter.
I thought we went over that.
And so it, it should be there that you can only appoint an unregistered voter. It's just to the next election, just to fill that blank to the next election.
We'll take a look. Um, what it might be is it's somewhere else in there.
That's right.
Um, but maybe.
That's as far as I got, and I got annoyed, so.
Well, I'm sorry.
It's on page one, I got.
They collected appointment. So, I mean, it's a good point. You're right.
I mean, and it's, you know, it's just, it's simple thing that vacancy is only filled until the next election. Making, saying that people can assume something that is not what a policy should do. Policy must be very clear on everything.
We'll find, and maybe we have to add it in again, or we'll, we'll just clarify that. Thank you for bringing it.
It, it may have been one of those things that we thought was stupid headed and we believed it, because it was stupid headed, but it's quite.
Um, anyone else have one in just be a business?
One is to, in our man, we do have a car policy, one takes from the T and one takes out two pages.
Okay.
Pardon me?
It goes for about three pages.
Car policy.
Car policy, it's all common sense, so we're okay there, in my opinion. We talked a little bit about the guns. Do we want to try to have a policy? Cause I, I haven't spent a lot of time searching it, but, you know.
There's got to be one that, I mean.
Yeah, but when you do it, they give you all the Massachusetts laws, but I'll keep doing it. I, I think we need one. I just don't want to spend my time doing it, if you guys are saying that.
Well, for the most part, we just want our employees, when they're at work, to follow Massachusetts law. But do we, can we legally impose any more restrictions than that, or like that could get us in big trouble? If we.
Well, I could write a note to Donna and say, are we allowed to say you're not allowed to bring firearms into your place?
Unless they're necessary for your job, like for the police.
She can.
Well, obviously, she can, but.
Police probably have their own entire, police probably have their own gun protocol, firing protocols, right? That they have to follow separate from Mass General law, or it's in Mass General law, or it's a policy?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, I'm sure that there is a, there's an MGL for, for, you know, for carrying firearms and, you know, and for on-duty, off-duty.
Concealed.
Yeah, and, you know, and our requirements for, um, you know, certification you have to, that's from the chiefs of police. Like how often do we have to practice to carry firearm on the job? I mean, I, I think there's plenty of, there's plenty of buildings that you're not allowed to carry firearms in, if you're allowed to have one, right? I've been in a lot of federal building where you're not allowed to have a firearm, right? Um, so I, it's just a question of whether that can or does apply to other these buildings. Yeah, you can't bring a firearm into, like, into the court, you know, Southern Berchard District Court or, you know. Even when I go to a jail, if I'm bringing a prisoner in jail, I have to put my firearm in a locker. If we have, we bring a prisoner in, let's say we had a holding cell here, and I was like in the booking room with a prisoner, I have to put my firearm in a, in a locker.
I'll be there for you.
Oh, that's a lot difficult. Let's take a chit-chat.
Um, if there's no more comments and questions in public or on this bit of business, um, I don't think we're going to get the minutes, because we're way over our time, right? Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We vote on a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, we adjourned at eight thirty-six PM?